Welcome to the special meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Hall. Today is Tuesday, December 17th at 6:00 and we're in Charlie Benson Memorial Hall. Kim, can you please do roll call?
Councilwoman DiGliotti.
Here.
Councilmember Lindell.
Here.
Councilmember Getzel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirk.
Here.
So, we're going to kick off with general public comment. Three minutes for anything that is not on the agenda. Please come up, express your -- tell us who you are and we'll count down three minutes. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Mike DeLaffo with LandWatch. I apologize, I have another -- two other meetings to go to tonight. There's an item on the agenda but I'm not going to speak to it. I'm going to speak more generally to the issues of housing and water. So, LandWatch has been a strong advocate for housing for many, many years. We've supported projects in the last few years, including the Tanamur and Anel project, Pebble Beach project, the Walnut project, and Greenfield, supporting rezoning in Monterey. All these efforts are aimed at providing more housing in our community. At the same time, we've also been very involved in water and sustainable water. So, we hold seats on the Salinas Valley Groundwater Authority, Groundwater Sustainability Agency. We've been involved with each of the jurisdictions that are part of the FORA in advocating for sustainable water supplies. Occasionally, these two things conflict, housing and water. And when they conflict, we think it's really important that there be a supply that be affordable, that it be assured, and that it not lead to the potential for people that are getting water today to not have water tomorrow. So, part of what you're going to hear from our attorney-in-law are our concerns generally, or more specifically, with a conflict between these two general principles. But I just wanted to make you know, let you know, that housing remains a very key priority for LandWatch and we have -- we're not -- the issues that will come up tonight are ones that we've raised with Marina, with Seaside, with Monterey, and they aren't specific to Delray Oaks. So, that's my public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Hi, Kim Shirley, Baxter Place. All right, good evening, City Councilmembers and Mayor Kirk. My comments this evening are in regards to the recent airport meetings that I've attended. I'm sharing this information in hopes that you remain informed and interested in both what the airport is planning to do, as well as how the residents feel about the airport's potential to build a road connecting Delray Oaks and the airport. Last week, about a dozen residents attended the Monterey Regional Airport Board Meeting on Wednesday, December 11th. We were concerned about the airport capital improvement plan, which was being sent for approval, or was set for approval that day. The airport capital improvement plan listed the projects that the airport plans on completing within the next five years. This list is meant for the FAA, as it provides both the amount they expect to receive from the FAA for the projects, as well as the amount the district would need for each particular project. The project we were concerned with was titled "Northside Road DRO Connection," and was slated for 2021 for a total of $5.4 million, with almost $4.9 million coming from the FAA. After hearing multiple comments asking them to remove this project item from the list, the airport board discussed it. They stated that they wanted to keep the line item available for potential road projects, but then also proceeded to say that they weren't exactly sure where the road was going to go. They ultimately agreed to remove DRO from the project description. This may seem like a small victory, but in all regards, this deletion was only a small appeasement at best. Strangely, throughout the airport master plan, the Northside Road was always going to be going through Delray Oaks. Also, I do find it hard to believe that after many years of work, thousands of dollars spent on the airport master plan, that they wouldn't have any idea where the road is going to be placed. This issue seemed even more misplaced when I then started reviewing the Airport Land Use Commission's compatibility plan for the Monterey Airport. In their detailed map, called the Airport Layout Plan, it clearly states that there is a quote "future Northside access point," exactly where they've been talking about putting a road all along, connecting the airport to the Delray Gardens Drive. As you all know, this note on the Airport Layout Plan is completely inconsistent with our general plan. To my knowledge, the ALUC hasn't seemed concerned with this inconsistency. Yesterday, Monday, December 16th, half-dozen residents also attended the ALUC meeting to share concerns about the road. When their chair asked if the commissioners had any comments, she was met with total silence. We seem to be getting used to silence around here. The airport workshops were held in July, and again, similar to many other times, their proposal was widely rejected by the residents. Since then, I'm told that the city has heard nothing from the airport, or from the airport Land Use Commission. We know that there were talks prior to last year's election to create a connection between the airport and Delray Oaks. The election in November 2018 seemed to upend those talks. Now, we are left wondering what's the next step for the airport. We certainly hope it will be transparent and forthcoming with any knowledge you have about plans for any airport connections with DRO. After all, residents would like a resolution. The longer this project is ignored, the more anxious and frustrated the residents become. We have asked the airport board to openly start working with our city and our city council members. We're hoping they engage our city in real thoughtful dialogue. If they do share their plans with you, we would expect you to also inform the residents. Transparency and authentic dialogue are fundamental principles we hope you will provide as we face this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Kim, I just want to address that because it's a really important subject. The city's official position continues to be that which we took in an October 2018 letter to the airport district during the comment period for their master plan's EIR, which stated unequivocally that the city opposes a Northside access road, and went through the reasoning for it, and described what the city would support, which was a version of the plan in their master plan that would go through the existing airport road through Monterey. That is the city's official position. Since then, as you mentioned, we've had the public workshops. In addition to that, we have established a process by which the airport could ask for a general plan amendment. Since that time, we have not spoken with them. I have not spoken with them, my staff has not spoken with them, to my knowledge, no city council members have, and we await some kind of engagement from the airport district. I have been in the same meetings with Michael Pierre several times about different subjects, asked him if anything was going to happen, and he reiterated the line he's used several times with me, which is they are exploring all options. That's what I know.
Thank you.
Irene Wollich. Last Sunday, we had a very, very beautiful opening of the first Delray Oaks art show, the first annual art show. It was beautiful. Well, I believe there were 22 artists, only from Delray Oaks, and they displayed their worth. And it was beautiful, it was well-attended, citizens from not even Delray Oaks, Monterey, from out of town, from down south, they were all up here. And they enjoyed it. The only thing comments were made was the council, was the city manager, or staff, because nobody showed up. And the citizens were kind of disappointed about that. How come they don't support us? So, I just want to report what's going on, okay?
Thank you, Irene.
Scott Donaldson, Portola Drive. I always like to take advantage of any opportunity to promote the oak tree program. And as many of you may know, the first 100 vouchers that we had were gone in 35 days. And I'm very excited to report that Citizens Action Group has funded another additional 100 trees. It's the same procedure as before. You get your voucher here at City Hall, take it down to the garden center, and redeem it for a five-gallon-sized oak tree that you can take back to your residence. Also, be on the lookout sometime next week. KSBW is going to run a story about the program, so I look forward to that. Please spread the word, and if you haven't completed all your shopping, an oak tree makes a wonderful holiday gift.
Scott, are they only for Delray Oaks residents?
Yes, only for Delray Oaks residents, and you're allowed three vouchers per household.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? All right, not seeing any. We're going to close public comment. Our schedule is a little different than normal this evening. We're going to be going into closed session before we discuss our new business. So, what we need to do is close -- oh, excuse me, we need public comment on the closed-session items, and then we will go into closed session, and then we'll call everybody back. So, now is the time for public comments on anything having to do with significant exposure to litigation and/or existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9, name of case, Robert Ingersoll versus City of Delray Oaks. Any public comments on those two items? Not seeing any public comments. I'm going to close the comment section, and we will be going into closed session. So, we will call you back when we're done. Thank you. We're going to adjourn to open session. Are you ready?
I am ready.
Please report out by our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to both items on closed session, updates were provided to council, direction was given to staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Number four, 4A, is consider resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2019 Ford F-650 Public Works Dump Truck. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The matter before you tonight is to authorize the purchase of a city fleet vehicle, which is a 2019 Ford F-650 diesel regular cab dump truck using FORA Caretaker Grant funding. Our existing dump truck is aging, and its maintenance costs are increasing. One of the items that we earmarked for Caretaker Grant funding for this fiscal year was the purchase of a replacement vehicle. This is the replacement vehicle. The city went out for three bids. This is the low bid item. And so, the request for you is to approve the action of purchasing a replacement dump truck at a cost of $89,411, which will be reimbursed to the city from FORA Caretaker Grant funds. The existing dump truck will then be sold. We don't have an amount that we'll get from that, but whatever amount we do get, we'll go back into the general.
Any comments, questions? Counsel? All right, go out for a public comment. Any public comment on the dump truck? No public comment. Come back to counsel.
Move to approve the Resolution 2019-26, the purchase of the Ford F-650.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, 4B, consider reimbursement agreement with Seaside -- excuse me, County Sanitation District for sewer design services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is considering a memorandum of understanding between the City of Delray Oaks and the Seaside County Sanitation District to fund an amount not to exceed $50,000 for the design of sewer line down South Boundary Road. As you know, the South Boundary Road project is under design, and there's an economy of scale to design the wet utilities concurrently with the road design, and then there will be subsequent cost savings to construct the utilities and dig the trenches concurrently with the construction of the road. At this point, we're in the design phase. The Marina Coast Water District is designing the potable water pipeline concurrently with the road project. Seaside County Sanitation is prepared to design the sanitary sewer line, but requires reimbursement of those design costs. We expect them to let a contract with Witsen Engineers for the design, which are also the design firm for the roadway. The Seaside County Sanitation Board recently met and approved the MOU from their perspective. And so, the memorandum is before you for approval tonight. We anticipate that the design would take place sometime in the next four to six months concurrently with the road design. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, comments, questions?
None.
Okay. Let's go out to the public. Any public comments?
Hi, Scott Waltz, Delray Oaks resident, FORTAG advocate. There's some details here, stay with me. This is a little bit tedious, but it's important, especially since we're at the early phases. In 2017, as advocates of FORTAG, Fred Watson, who you've all seen, and I, had a number of discussions with Peter Sia, who's the engineer at FORA, regarding the South Boundary Realignment Project. One of the focuses in that discussion was on the sewage infrastructure that's being referenced here as part of the redesign. Now, the incline of General Jim Moore from that intersection towards Delray Oaks makes that an appealing element for a gravity sanitation sewage collection system. However, the sewage line underneath General Jim Moore Boulevard, if that were the plan, would conflict with FORTAG's plans to create effectively a bridge, but maybe think of it as an underpass between Frog Pond 1 and Frog Pond 2. Essentially, the legal and financial requirements of that kind of a sewage line design would preclude construction of any reasonable underpass. Now, in the fall of that same year, Fred met with Rick Riedel, just retired, but he's the district engineer for the Seaside City Sanitation District, to discuss these details. And through their discussion, they realized that both projects could go forward, so there's no reason that you couldn't have a very effective sewage design and the FORTAG underpass. Further, we lobbied, Fred and I lobbied FORA, to ensure that the FORTAG route would be taken into account in the early stages of that design. The result was that the FORA Board approved the Agreement for Professional Services, and I can give you the number, if you want the document number, with Witsen, that included a Service Work Order W2 Scope of Services, which required Witsen, quote, "to coordinate basis of design concepts with FORTAG," unquote. There were a number of other parties that they were and are to meet with, including TAMPSC, as well as other groups. We, to date, this is two years ago, have not heard from Witsen, but we remain hopeful. As the city of Delray Oaks considers stepping into this, skinning the game through funding, the design of the gravity sanitary sewage collecting system by reimbursing SCSD for the work generated by Witsen, Fred and I would ask the city council and the city manager to remain mindful that the work generated by Witsen may have a direct impact on the FORTAG plans, and we would encourage the city council and the city manager to support the commitment that's already in the documentation of the work order, to meet their commitment, to meet with the FORTAG planners, the objective being that the City of Delray Oaks, down the line, will end up with both whatever kind of infrastructure needs it wants and the FORTAG trail. That will, that can absolutely happen, as long as discussions happen early and continue and people are mindful. However, I'll conclude by noting that there have been a number of experiences that Fred and I've run into, most of them minor, where we've had discussions, the details of which were forgotten, or city staff did not keep in mind that there were multiple projects that needed to work together, and so some options got closed off to us, only because discussions weren't minded early and then continually checked in on. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any other public comments on the sanitation district sewer design services? Seeing no public comment, I'll come back to the council. Any comments?
Just the obvious one, is consultation with FORTAG part of the Seaside City Sands scope?
I have not seen SCSD's scope of work that they're going to Witsen for, so I'm going to follow up with FORA, as well as SCSD on the issue. Appreciate the reminder.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve reimbursement agreement for sewer design services with Seaside County Sanitation District.
Subtle. All right, all, 4?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. All right, so we're going to move on to 4C, consider recommendation from the Planning Commission to adopt a draft housing element update, and to adopt a negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. I want to thank all of you for being patient, as we met a little earlier, but I'd like to open it up to council for comments and questions.
Do you have a presentation?
Oh, sorry, we have a presentation. Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this item has been underway for almost a year now, and I want to just start by just recognizing Denise Duffy and Ashley Quackenbush for their impressive work over the last, I guess, 10 months in this effort. As the public knows, the governor has made addressing California's housing crisis a top priority. The city council has made addressing housing stock in the city a top priority by directing staff to update the city's housing element, and the city has been, staff has been working on this for, as I said, the last 10 months. We've gone through numerous steps as required by law, interacting with the Department of Housing and Community Development in Sacramento to develop a housing element that is contemporary and compliant with state law. The last time the city adopted a housing element was 1992, and so our housing element is quite out of date. The city hasn't had the resources to revise it. Since then, several efforts have fallen short in terms of adoption and filing with the state, and so this is truly a momentous occasion for the city. The comments that we received back from HCD on our draft were taken into account. A modified draft housing element was sent to the Planning Commission, as well as the accompanying environmental review, which was an initial study with negative declaration. And public comment was received. We received four letters from the public, and I'm going to turn this over to Denise, who's going to walk us through a presentation, and then address the responses to the public comment, before bringing it back to myself for discussion about options to the council. Planning Commission decided to recommend to the city council adoption of the housing element as presented to the Planning Commission. Following that decision, which also included three other components, one was to continue to engage with stakeholders, to include LandWatch, the other was to consider future rezoning of the 17 acres to open space, and the third was to continue to look into how the state develops its statistics that relate to future job growth, future population growth, that inform affordable housing requirements. Based on that decision, staff not only engaged HCD, but engaged LandWatch, the Marina Coast Water District, and other stakeholders in a process that resulted in the staff recommendation in the packet tonight, which is a modified version of the housing element that the Planning Commission approved and sent to council. And the primary changes in the revision are the removal of language relating to the requirement to rezone any property within the city, as well as a removal of specificity as to what land in the land use inventory would be looked at specifically for affordable housing. It's a thick packet, but the redline version is in your packet. And finally, there's a final initial study and negative declaration that Denise and Ashley and the team have prepared, that takes into account the public comment and provides responses, though not required by statute, to those comments, which is also on the dais, as well as on the table outside for the public. I think at this point, I'll turn it over to Denise for a presentation.
Thank you, members of the city council and the public. Can you hear me, everybody? So, I'd like to -- So, I'd like to go over a brief presentation with some background on the housing element and the process that we've used and the requirements under state law for the housing element. Our agenda is looking a little bit at the introduction and the overview of our process, the contents and requirements, the housing element review and adoption process, looking at, I want to just identify that some of the past policies, have the public hopefully understand a little bit more about the land availability assessment, the land use inventory, discuss the regional needs assessment, compliance with CEQA. The process, as I understand, after the close of my presentation, would be for the city council to open up for public comments. We'll be available to answer any staff questions after the public comments, and also any city council questions after the close of the public hearing. The housing element generally is one of the seven mandated general plan elements. The content and the process for housing element adoption is very specifically prescribed in Government Code 65583. And the housing element law requires each local government to plan for existing and projected housing needs to meet all economic segments of the community. And the housing element must be reviewed and certified by the state HCD, and robust public outreach and public review are required as part of the housing element process. The city has an interesting historical overview of the housing element, given the fact that the current housing element is adopted, as Dino mentioned, is the 1992 version. The housing element incorporated into the city general plan update in 1995, when the general plan was approved in 1997 with the general plan update, EIR, and a FORA consistency analysis, and completed shortly thereafter. There was an early version of a draft housing element update, two of them actually prepared. A draft was prepared in 2003, and another draft was prepared in 2006. The 2003 version was very close to compliance with HCD, and then wasn't incorporated into the draft, or wasn't fully adopted. It was circulated for public review. It identified the same land use locations for suitability as we have under this current housing element, the 2019 version. The 2006 version was a more robust housing element. It also included legislative actions, including rezoning, development in residential areas in the former Ford Orde to meet the regional housing needs, I think it was 168 units at that time for rezoning the former Ford Orde site. At the 2000 city council action, that housing element, even though the initial study was circulated and completed, was not, the city council did not adopt the housing element. At that time, the public came up and decided that they would rather see anything in Ford Orde looked at as a holistic process, so there was actually a developer in the former Ford Orde at that time, and the city went on to consider all actions in one document, including a zoning overlay for that large development. And then ultimately, also, a water supply assessment was adopted by the Marina Coast Water District for that specific, I think, number of units for the former Ford Orde site. Getting back to the housing element historical overview, the Planning Commission review had conducted -- had conducted an overview of all the city plan, general plan policies, and the city regularly conducts its visioning process, the city council, and one of the major priorities in the vision process was a comprehensive update to housing element that was started in, I think, fully restarted in April and May of 2019. And today, we're at a spot where we can consider a recommendation for review and adoption. The housing element must look at existing needs and projected needs. Talks is a lot about how much people are paying for housing, projected needs analysis looks at the regional housing needs. You'll hear a lot about regional housing needs assessment. That plan is in the housing element and identifies as per AMBAG, our regional housing coordinator, really what numbers of housing units need to be identified and provided, space provided for vacant lands to provide for the availability of housing to be developed in these vacant sites. Aside, inventory and analysis is an important component for a housing element, has to be under the requirements of the state law, properties identified with parcels and existing conditions, the availability of infrastructure, and the valuation and the suitability of the potential development capacity in addressing the regional housing needs and population growth. Have to look at, also, housing elements must look at analysis of constraints, what's holding the city up in terms of being able to create housing and affordable housing, and looking at the share of regional housing needs established. Specifically, the housing, meat of the housing element is development of housing programs. In addition to looking at how the city has met or has not met the set of programs or completed their programs in their previous housing element, the city, which is included in our housing element, the city also has to identify programs that would remove, accommodate their local share of the regional housing needs, remove constraints, conserve or improve housing stock, and promote fair, equal housing, especially based on providing also for special needs groups. The housing element also requires us to put in quantified objectives, how much, what is the number of units you could provide within a certain period of time over the planning period. So our housing element has all of these programs and evaluation, it's within the existing housing element, and then once we've identified the housing element programs, we have them under each of these categories, the housing element is then reviewed by the city council and planning commission through our public workshops and outreach programs, which we've done, and then HCD will look at the draft housing element to determine if that meets their HCD requirements. Specifically, I want to underscore the fact that although the housing element establishes goals and needs and objectives, it's a policy document, it's an overview planning document. It's a policy framework of the general plan, but it does not necessarily promote or require that programs be adopted or that the housing units be constructed. The 2019 was provided to HCD for the public review, and the document was provided in September 2018. It had a set of programs, this is a set of examples, go ahead, and it specifically had a land use inventory. The land use inventory for 2019 was very similar to the previous housing elements in terms of the location of where housing could be provided. The sites one and one A would be the former Fort Ord property. It's currently zoned for commercial and visitor serving, and golf course in the FORA plan has limitations for unexploded ordinance, but it is available and has large vacant parcels. When we submitted the 2018 housing element, September 18th, 2019 housing element to HCD, HCD specifically preferred site one A due to its available infrastructure. It's a smaller availability than HCD staff considered this based upon their knowledge of the local area and the water constraints, this would be the appropriate site for development of housing. There was also site number two, which was evaluated, even though it was 17 acres total, as the Planning Commission confirmed and we've updated in the updated housing element, there's only a few acres that would be available for development. There's a lot of constraints on 17 acre site, as we call it, in particular wetlands, slope, woodlands, just trees, just a highly resource oriented site, so that although it's in the land use inventory, it, in addition to water and limitations for development of residential uses, it has not a very high practical benefit for housing in the city, but it was in the previous inventories, so we included it with a much reduced amount of land available. The previous old golf driving range, site three, is looked at under the land use inventory. It's currently in a driving range operation, or it used to be driving range operation, now it's the landscaping business. The area that has been considered for some units would be up front where the cul-de-sac is, so a limited number of units, and also the area in the back near Safeway has that back entrance, if people can see, that has access directly up Highway 68, may be developable in terms of above the flood plain. It also has water limitations. And then there's the second units, the ADUs, which although they, there's an available land use inventory of at least 185, just considering 8,000 square foot lots, and could be greater number of units. It also has the land use restrictions or the water restrictions under Marina Coast, sorry, Water Management District. So the regional housing needs, is the, AMBAG distributes the housing needs in terms of what types of housing and fair share of the statewide housing needs is determined to be, and it's divided by income category, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, and then it's distributed for each jurisdiction. You'll notice that Monterey County's totals, both population and persons per household are a lot greater. If you go to the next slide. And Monterey County has a whole, has a very high regional housing needs assessment. They are looking at 7,000 units total in terms of their RENA, regional housing needs. Del Riox for the 2015 to 2023, which is the fifth cycle, has 27 units. Since the fourth cycle was never completed by Del Riox, we also have to add the 59 units of the low and very low on top of that from the fourth cycle for a total of 86 units in the regional housing needs assessment. We've just identified quickly what, as Dino pointed out, the administrative draft, I mean, it's been a robust public outreach program and process. If you went onto the website, you'll see a number of different versions of the housing element that have been identified. We went so far as we prepared administrative draft housing element and made that available to the city on the website, then we prepared the public review draft housing element and made that available to the public, sent out public review for the 30-day review through CEQA. Comments from the public were considered and responded to. HCD in particular had very specific comments on the housing element, and there was a robust process with city staff and HCD over the 60-day review period. We've conducted public hearings at Planning Commission and council, identifying red line versions, as you'll see in the staff report, both for Planning Commission and council, and also earlier in November, we went before the council and provided a red line version of revised programs as well. I think it was October or November. There's a deadline to adopt the housing element for this four-year cycle, and that's December 31st. The final adopted housing element, once it's adopted, if it does get adopted by the city today, would be then submitted to HCD, and they have a 90-day review period. What they do during that 90 days is determine whether the city's housing element, as adopted, would be considered to be compliant or not with housing element. They've written a letter November 14th, which is in the packet, regarding what it would take to create a compliant housing element for the city. So the city's RHNA, which is very specific, must demonstrate how it will accommodate the production or the future available land for these regional housing needs assessment, and I think that the housing element does that within the context that the housing element as identified by Dino. There's also the initial study that was prepared, which resulted in a finding that would qualify, that the housing element adoption would qualify for a negative declaration under CEQA, and that's been available for public review since early October 2019. The public comments were received or have been included in both the city's websites and public comment packet, as well as in the final ISND, which is available on the website and also at the front desk. So today, we will, I'll be happy to answer any questions from the public after public review. I think we will reserve my comments on the final initial study until we hear from the public. Thank you.
So I'm going to go out to the public right now. So if anyone has comments on this, now would be the time. Please keep your comments to three minutes, identify who you are, and let us know your thoughts.
I'm working with LandWatch on this. We appreciate staff's efforts to work with us. We reached out after the Planning Commission meeting, and we've had a couple of conversations. It's not clear to me what's being proposed tonight. The staff report indicated that there were two options being recommended, and it would be helpful to hear from Ms. Duffy what changes, if any, are being proposed, and also there was an implication that there is a new negative declaration, which has also not been circulated. This is the first I've heard of that. So if there's been a change to the environmental review, we'd be interested in hearing how it's been changed and how any comments that we've put out have been addressed. With regard to the options that were presented in the staff report released on Friday night, we've pointed out in a new letter, which I hope you've had a chance to review, kind of last minute, but, you know, it was a last minute presentation, we pointed out that the neither options that are being recommended are acceptable because they both violate CEQA and the housing element law. They violate CEQA because both contain the Fort Ord land development, and as we've explained, if you permit development of residential use on Fort Ord that uses water, you need to prepare an EIR. I won't get into all the details, we've laid it out in our letters, but it's pretty clear to us that the negative declaration is not in adequate compliance. It's been suggested that this is merely a policy document, and there's no commitment to rezone these sites. There's two things wrong with that. First, it's not just a policy document. Cities are required to do CEQA for their general plans. You've done CEQA, that's an acknowledgement of the obligation. The only question is, what's the form? And the proper form is an EIR. The other problem with it is that you can't postpone CEQA compliance to a rezone. As we've explained in our most recent letter, as soon as you include these sites in inventory, even though you say you're not going to rezone them, even though you say you're not committing to rezone them, there are two separate provisions in the housing element law that'll remove the city's discretion to disapprove housing development on those properties. The reason for that is that you're delinquent in the rezoning. Once you've gone three years from the beginning of a housing cycle without rezoning, there is basically a right to build housing on those sites, and the city is not allowed to disapprove that. We've given you a citation to that code section, and you should probably discuss that with your council. Second, there's a separate provision called the Housing Accountability Act, which also denies the city's ability to disapprove residential projects on land that's once you include it in your inventory. Even if you don't have a rezone, even if you say you're not committing to rezone, the mere inclusion of that land in the inventory means that you cannot disapprove future housing on that. That means you need to do the CEQA analysis now. You can't say, "We're just going to think about it for a while and do it later." That's the CEQA aspect. Now, if you adopt one of those two versions tonight, if you adopt the second one that's being proposed, you're saying in there, "We're not committing to a rezone," then you're not doing an adequate housing element. The housing element law is clear that you not only have to identify sites, but if those sites are not rezoned, you need to make a commitment to rezon it. That's part of the housing element law. You can't prepare a housing element and say, "We'll think about the rezoning and call that adequate." The housing element law requires that you make a commitment to that rezon, so that the inventory of the sites is not sufficient. There has to be a commitment to rezon. If that's my time, I guess I'll just make one more. I'm not sure I heard of P.
That is your time.
I just want to make one more point and then offer to answer questions. But the final point is that the element that was approved by the Planning Commission called for two sites. The substantial issue here is what sites are going to be included. If you change that, you need to send it back to the Planning Commission for their reconsideration. You are not allowed by law to approve a substantial modification to a general plan without referring it back to the Planning Commission. So anyway, I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you, John.
May I make a request? I mean, I'd like to offer, if I can, I'd like to offer, you know, the adequate time for you to finish all of your comments that you have prepared.
How much time is left?
You know, I just want to offer to answer questions. I've written you guys two letters. The most recent letter, I'm sorry that I couldn't get it to you any sooner than Monday, but we didn't get the staff report until Friday night, and we did what we could over the weekend to respond to it. Now we hear there's a new document, a new negative deck. We'll have to take a look at that, too, but I think that's, at this point, I would recommend that you go back to the Planning Commission with this. We're happy to continue talking, we're happy to continue working. We think there's an easy solution here. Remove the Fort Ord sites for now. You can look at them later. You can get a compliant housing element through HCD with sites two, three, and four. HCD will bless that. You have now found that there is adequate water on those sites, which was the only thing inhibiting you before. At this point, I think you have made that determination. You've said, "There is water." We know that CalAM has mandated to provide a water supply by 2021. The government code says a site listed in inventory has to have an adequate water supply available and accessible, or there has to be a mandatory plan or program to provide that water supply. The CPUC's order to the CalAM says they shall implement the desalination project by 2021. That is a mandatory plan or program to provide water. That's your water supply. There is no such mandatory plan or program for Fort Ord. Simple fix here. Designate sites two, three, and four. Come back to it if you want to look at Fort Ord later and when there's time for an environmental review. You want to get something compliant, do two, three, and four. So that would be my recommendation.
Thanks, John.
And I'm happy to answer questions if people have them. I've obviously spent some time thinking about it.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Shirley Baxter Place. This is going to be far less technical. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I've been doing my best to attend all of the workshops and meetings provided for the public in relation to the housing element update. As a resident, I felt it was my duty to remain engaged. I've enjoyed the meetings and felt as though I was given opportunities to ask questions and share my thoughts. For that, I am very thankful to the city for providing these opportunities to be part of the process. I really did enjoy it. Unfortunately, I'm realizing now how little I truly understood about the entire process. I feel like I was taking down a path where maybe I wasn't given all the information I needed, and I also didn't really have the foundational knowledge to ask the questions that would have helped me to arrive to my current opinion. After reading through the letter from LandWatch on November 14th, it's clear that we cannot accept the housing element as it was originally written, which placed our affordable housing on sites one and one A in Fort Ord. True water availability and the need for an EIR are clearly insurmountable issues for those sites. In your amended housing element, you included, you continued to include sites one and one A with variation in the language, but you still don't propose an EIR as seems necessary for those sites. Given that there's a threat of litigation for choosing these particular sites, it seems that the most logical solution at this point is to create a housing element that satisfies the requirements of compliant housing element, even it does require extra work and some time, while also avoiding putting our city at a financial risk for litigation. I understand that being able to apply for grants seems like a great thing for the city, but those grants are not guaranteed, and it should not be the very thing that drives our decisions. Any money gotten through those grants would likely be far less than the legal fees from the lawsuit. I'd like to see the city move in a direction that involves the least amount of risk. It might take some creative planning, and it might delay our development of Fort Ord, but I believe that you should take into consideration all variables and not rush into this decision, which would leave us financially vulnerable. Bottom line, we want the best of both worlds, a compliant housing element that is achieved in a manner that is thoughtful and follows the letter of the law. Thanks.
Thanks, Kim. Any other public comment?
Federica Jones Hillwell Place. I'm in agreement with a lot of the things that Kim Shirley had proposed in her statement. What I would be asking is that we work together with LandWatch and CEQA and other entities that are involved, and perhaps, as Ms. Duffy said, this was a policy, could be a policy plan, and that we don't take any further action in haste without... plan and that we don't take any further action in haste without trying to get the $160,000 that the state is offering for grants. The city is finally becoming fiscal and fiscally sound and there's been investments that have been made and there's been great strides. Let's not throw that away by hastily trying to get $160,000 grant funds and then losing out to lawsuits. We know they're very expensive. I'm sure that the city has learned that from past lawsuits that we're still probably trying to pay off. So I think if we take our time and make sound judgments, it would be the best for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Frederica. Scott?
Scott Donaldson, Delray Oaks resident and member of the planning commission. You know, it was nearly two years ago that I began the conversation about 17 acres at this very podium. During my proposal, I advocated protecting over 13 acres of that property, of which included five acres that were in the west that made for a natural extension of the frog pond and a logical connection to the habitat area to the north. Another eight acres to the north and east that consist of high slope terrain, hundreds of coastal oak trees, and it's within the view shed of the Oaks condominium complex. I advocated then, and I'm advocating now, that those should be dedicated parkland areas and protected green space. This housing element, which is the first we've seen in 20 years, still identifies the entire 17 acres for development. When I presented my proposal, there was another presentation that asked for a very large development on this property and it really showed how inappropriate that type of use of land would be. There's absolutely no appetite in this city for a large development on that property and it created a lot of anxiety for our residents and especially those that live out at the During our recent planning commission meeting, we considered adopting this housing element. I argued that 17 acres needed to be rezoned in order to protect it. This document, as it's currently written, does not. And from what I'm hearing from Land Watch and their recommendation, it also does not protect 17 acres. Rezoning and protecting the majority of this property is the right thing to do. It makes sense and frankly, we owe it to our residents that live out at the Oaks. I've advocated years, for years, with my voice on this issue and just recently with my vote. And I think now is the time for leadership, so I'm asking Mayor Kurt to join me in voting no on this housing element. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any other public comments? All right, we're going to close public comment and come to the council. Questions, comments?
Well, one obvious one is that, you know, Land Watch doesn't have to sue us. It's not a compulsion. So, I mean, they choose to sue us. So any injury that, you know, that the city would feel by Land Watch's decision to sue us is theirs. They caused that. I don't know. I mean, Dino, is there anything that, anything in the staff that you can kind of help tell me which of the two, of the two options would be better? I mean, I have my personal feelings about it.
Sure. What I'm happy to do is go through the staff recommendation.
Do you want me to respond to any comments on the initial study?
Yes. Sorry, thank you so much. Just do that and then I'll go through staff recommendations. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to briefly, this is Denise Duffy again, clarify some of the items that were questioned on the, by the presenters and also, you know, request certain concurrence on some of the questions from the city council. First of all, there was a request as to what staff recommendation was and I just want to clarify that staff recommendation is on the second to last page of the staff report. Dino will be going over it with more detail and it specifically says staff recommends the council adopt resolution with attachment H under staff recommendation. That staff recommendation considers the planning commission recommendations from the November 25th report. And I also want to clarify to Mr. Donaldson that the, the housing element does not propose 17 acres for development. The site that you saw up there, the land use plan map, it's, the site is referred to as 17 acres. But we did hear you at the, at the planning commission and in the environmental documentation and the land use inventory, we, and in my staff presentation, I just mentioned that it's really a environmentally constrained, water constrained, resource constrained, and one to two acres, you know, is what. And we did hear and the staff does understand and recommend that you personally and the planning commission want to consider the site for rezoning for open space. It's not specifically an action that could be undertaken during this housing element, but I'll refer that to city manager for further discussion. Also, I wanted to clarify and identify that there is a response to comment document on the, on the dais and it's been available at the front desk since this afternoon for responses to comments for the initial study. It's also on the city website. It is called a final initial study. And as, as required or under CEQA, we've received a number voluminous comments from Land Watch organization. So it did take some time to respond to some of those comments and that's what this document provides. CEQA doesn't require that you prepare written responses, but it does require that the city consider the comments. And so hopefully, that clarifies that. One of the speakers, I think, let Mr. Farrow identify that the project permits residential development. The project is a housing element. The project is not a permit for allowance, for allowing for residential development and as such, does not mandate a requirement for an EIR or violate CEQA. It doesn't permit residential development and it doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be any water developed or used under the housing element. I think that's a misclarification. In our response to comments, we identified and also in previous planning commission consideration and discussions, that this is a policy document. That means it doesn't necessarily draw water. You're adopting a plan, you're not pumping groundwater. But there's other elements beyond that that you should consider in terms of this housing element and the use of water and the assertion by Land Watch that this is going to be a significant impact on the Salinas Valley groundwater basin. And so let me just outline a few of these discussion items that are also in the final initial study. Number one, this, this area of a former Ford Ord, if considered to be a site under the housing element in the future, was identified by HCD as the preferred site because it had potential for available water. The HCD staff is very familiar with the problems and the issues related to Monterey Peninsula Water Management District and the CDO for the existing peninsula. However, the Land Watch letter identified, and we responded as such, saying, "Well, you should also be considering land uses and sites within the former, within the peninsula because if water becomes available and if Water Management District provides allocation of water, then the city would surely want to use that." So our document and our analysis identifies that and that, I think we had a request to identify what the changes were within the housing element. Specifically, as Dino pointed out in his preliminary remarks, we're looking at all of the sites for available housing sites for providing arena, the regional housing needs. We have to identify vacant land or available land where services are available. There are no, you know, specific requirements that it must be house, site one, 1A, two or three or four, but those are vacant and or available underused, utilized sites that have potential services associated with them. We don't disagree that there would be availability if the CDO were lifted and either the DSA plan or expansion of pure Monterey, Monterey provided water. The city will be very interested to be able to provide affordable housing, water for affordable housing in whichever area of the land use inventory is available. At this point, we don't know when water is available first and it doesn't necessarily fall that the water that would be available on the former Ford Ord site would be water from the Salinas Valley groundwater basin. It's very important to understand that although the Marina Coast Water District, the service purveyor there, has an urban water management plan from 2015, even though FORA has an allocation of 243 acre feet that's currently been unused of totalable water and a probably 168 acre feet of recycled water identified for the former Ford Ord, that doesn't necessarily mean adoption of a housing element that any of that water would be used. That water is being planned for. It has a CIP, it has an urban water management plan, it has a water allocation, it has an unused available amount of water that other jurisdictions have been using Marina Coast Water District, both the allocations and the water provided by that district for the former Ford Ord area. And the city ultimately will be using, could be using the water from Salinas Valley groundwater basin, or they could be using water from another source that's being provided by Marina Coast Water District. Marina Coast Water District has the RUAP, the Regional Urban Water Augmentation Plan that is a fully certified EIR. It considers both DSA, a 1,500 acre, DSA plant and a 1,500 acre feet of recycled water. Marina Coast Water District has a 600 acre foot of water that is not from Salinas Valley groundwater. That would be from the currently approved prior water Monterey groundwater project, not the expansion project. The pipeline for that is already built. The Black Horse Reservoir is already built. It has been constructed over the last year and that is fully funded. The Marina Coast Water District could provide water from that source for former Ford Ord or other areas within Ford Ord. Has not yet been determined. There are other projects including conservation. The urban water management plan looked at conservation and in the final responses here, we have identified, just basically public information out of the urban water management plan and most recently adopted water supply assessment for the district, that conservation has resulted in a number of reductions of water within the Salinas Valley groundwater basin for the former Ford Ord of use of water. So there's, the point I'm making is that doesn't necessarily mean that if you identify Ford Ord as a four, as a site, that it would mean drawing water and that drawing, and then a conclusion that it would be drawing water, pumping water, and that would be coming from the Salinas Valley groundwater basin. I'd also like to point out that what CEQA considers as a baseline is what is current conditions now at the time that we started the environmental documentation. The time we started the environmental documentation, former Ford Ord has had a general plan EIR prepared by the city, findings for that general plan EIR, an FORA reuse plan and EIR and a redevelopment plan, use of a previous EIR. And each of those documents and findings identified that there would be development on the former Ford Ord. The Land Watch letter points out that there is a, the land use plans for the former Ford Ord identify golf course, a large hotel, visitor serving commercial and commercial property. Each of those, that entire set of development has a water use and demand factor that is in the hundreds of acre feet of water. And that actually, there was an adopted water supply assessment by Byron Buck, Byron Buck from Water, Marina Coast Water District in 2006 that certified the water supply availability for that site of, with hundreds of acre feet of water being drawn and provided by Marina Coast Water District. The, the fact of the matter is with additional, with previous environmental documentation identifying the amount of development that could occur on the site, in comparison to what we have here today, which is a housing element, a policy document, does not propose development on the project, proposes available land, vacant land and available land to be used to meet your regional housing needs, there would be essentially not an impact on the water. But if you would even consider that the impact, that there is an impact on water, meaning there will be some potential future water use, where is that water use going to be used from? Where is, is it coming from Salinas Valley groundwater basin, another source of water from Marina Coast that I've just identified, not groundwater? Or would it be coming from Monterey Peninsula Water Management District as Land Watch considers because that would be, you know, available water as well? So the, what would be the impact of that water? We don't know because we don't know what sites would be identified if it were the site of the former Ford Ord and you're looking at Dr. Timothy Parker identified 23 acre feet per year for 86 units for the, to the area of the former Ford Ord, using a .25 acre foot per year factor for single family homes and multiple family homes. The urban water management plan for Marina Coast Water District, while it uses those higher numbers, I don't think that they're actually accurate. When you look at a single family home, you're, we're looking at, if it were, for instance, the Ford Ord, former Ford Ord area, there's going to be covenants and restrictions for patio homes, smaller homes. They're affordable homes, so therefore there'll be one or two bedrooms with very limited amount of fixtures. So the actual water use, demand factor on smaller homes like that would be closer to those used by the Water Management District and Dave Stolt's most recent demand management, demands and supply analysis that is, was before the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. And we're looking at more likely .10, .12 acre feet per year per unit, per site, per 86. So you're looking at maybe half of 23 acre feet a year. If we were to look at water use as an impact, which we have in the, in the document. If you do that, how do you compare that against what's existing baseline? Existing baseline is, well, it's the Ford Ord reuse plan and the adopted general plan with the EIR that identifies the amount of water use and the impacts that it would be. Its existing baseline is the existing set of policies and programs from the 1992 general plan housing element. And in programs eight and nine, program eight and nine both identify residential use, amendment to a general plan and residential use on redevelopment of Ford Ord, as a matter of fact, up to 25 units per acre. So in the redevelopment area, which we identified to be Ford Ord, the current general plan housing element, the adopted housing element in 1992, has a baseline understanding of that there would be development, redevelopment in that area up to, and residential uses up to a certain amount of, up to even 25 acre feet. So the difference of this housing element with the programs that we're proposing, it's fairly consistent with some of the other programs that we've, we've talked about over the years. Consistent both in the land use inventory that I identified in terms of locations of where housing could occur within the city and within former Ford Ord, also consistent in terms of consideration of, of housing and residential uses in that particular area of the city. Water. I wanted to address the, the other element of having a housing element and stating that it has to have an EIR. And I think in our final initial study, we identified that you don't necessarily have to have an EIR because you have a project. A project is the adoption of the housing element. That doesn't fall in place that that project falls and creates a significant impact that would create a need or requirement under CEQA for an EIR. So we respectfully disagree with Land Watch on that. And I think that rather than the comment that was made that the city is postponing rezoning, the city has looked very carefully at the housing element policies and programs and is looking to work as much as they can with Land Watch in the future about identifying where the best spots and available sites would be. The city's housing element, the city has looked to HCD and discussed with HCD all of the options that, that Land Watch has identified. We've also considered those in the final responses to comments on the- We've also considered those in the final responses to comments on the housing element. We've tried to address looking at various areas and various sites within the city for development and areas for providing the affordable housing within them, the use of just the ADUs for the meeting, the regional housing needs assessment. We did discuss that with HCD, and I don't necessarily agree that with Land Watch commenter that said that then you would have a compliant housing element, that is not what we've been identifying. As a matter of fact, HCD letters identified that even with any rezoning, if we were to do that right now, we wouldn't have a housing element, there's not a compliant housing element, it's not possible to get there within the timeframe for the HCD letter. So I think I would just like to have everyone understand that throwing out the word compliant, it's a really long and arduous process to work with HCD to get to a compliant document. We have a document that is in substantial conformance, it is not, it's not considered compliant, and we've been working with them, you know, over the years on these various programs. I want to make sure I address all the comments. I think that there was a comment that was made that was referred to Alex regarding the right to build on the housing in terms of the SEQA, and I think I'd like to refer that to our city attorney.
No. The provisions cited, my understanding is that that is applicable to cities with eight-year housing element, and I don't believe that the city of Delray Oaks is currently in an eight-year cycle.
Denise, I'd like to add one comment about the water supply. Great rundown on the availability of water for Marina Coast Water District. In addition to that, in putting together the response to the letter and collecting information in response to Land Watch, Land Watch stated that a water supply would become available in the planning period within the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District We hope that's true, and if it is, it will provide water for the area encompassed by the water management district. Interestingly, the city of Delray Oaks Fort Ord parcels fall within the boundary of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. So if that water does indeed come, as Land Watch says it will, then there is a second potential option for providing water to our Fort Ord property, which would be through the water management district, which would require a LAFCO action. So I wanted to add that, and maps available from LAFCO, as well as the water management district, clearly outline the water management district's boundary. Denise, do you have anything else to add?
I think I just wanted a final comment to end the comment regarding if there were water use at a certain amount of development. You would have to look at that in terms of how does that impact, and if there would be an impact to Salinas Valley groundwater basin. Salinas Valley groundwater basin, Marina Coast Water District draws its water from the pressure area, the Monterey sub-basin of the pressure area, does not currently draw any water from the 180 to 400 foot photograph, which is under overdraft. Also, I think it's important to understand the context of the amount of water being considered in the future to accommodate if all of the water were from, used from the Salinas Valley groundwater basin for the 86 units, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood that I consider to be about 13 acre feet a year. When you look at the total amount of water in the Salinas Valley groundwater basin, or just the amount of water in the sub-basin, it's hundreds of thousands of acre feet on the groundwater basin to millions. It would, what we've heard before, when we looked at the Farini Ranch project with our hydrologist, Lou Dorfenskalminini, and it's submitted on the record in the Farini Ranch EIR record, that is not hydrologically significant. We wouldn't be able to count that amount of water or even try to understand or evaluate it from a hydrogeologic or technical standpoint. So that's the level of impact that we're talking about with that amount of water in this groundwater basin. Even all of that considered, again, there's no guarantee of this, of this source water being used at all, or need to be used, so I think we've addressed that question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor and Council, what I'd like to do is discuss briefly the options before you tonight, and then answer any questions you have. The staff recommendation, as Denise pointed out, is clearly stated in the staff report. The staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the housing element as modified and approve a negative declaration pursuant to SEQA. The housing element that staff is recommending you approve is at Attachment H. In the packet, there is a, I'm sorry, it's at Attachment G, and the draft resolution is Attachment H. Staff did work with Land Watch, as well as HCD and others, to arrive at this, at these revisions. It's important to note that in Chapter 7 of the revised housing element, requirements to rezone have been removed, and specificity as to where our RENA allocation might at some point in the future be placed is unspecific. And what the housing element calls for is to consider all land within the land use inventory as potentials, and does not require rezoning. There is a, an edit to that version that I'd like to clarify, and I'd like to call everyone's attention to the strike-through version, I'll let everyone get there. This is the redline version housing element, page 3-8 and 3-9. And in our discussions with Marina Coast Water District very recently, became clear that we needed to clarify the language on 3-8 and 3-9. And so our edits, our recommended edits to page 3-8, fourth paragraph down, that begins with the Marina Coast Water District. In the line that begins, however, water services and extension, which is the fourth sentence in the paragraph.
Part of the edit, part of the redline.
It is part of the redline. The staff recommendation is to strike the word however, so that the paragraph reads, water service and extension are dependent upon Marina Coast Water District CIP projects to extend water lines from General Jim Moore Boulevard to the sites, and then strikes the remainder of that paragraph. So I'll just read that again, because I know we're flipping around a large packet. The line that starts however, the word however would be stricken, and the paragraph would read, water service and extension are dependent upon Marina Coast Water District CIP projects to extend water lines from General Jim Moore Boulevard to the sites, period, and strikes the remainder of that paragraph.
Yeah, okay.
They're striking it out. The remainder of that paragraph.
And then on page 3-9, in the second paragraph, the first paragraph under Site 1 Alpha, that begins, this site is designated on Figure 4 to Site 1 Alpha. Staff recommends deletion of the last sentence that begins however.
There's a controversy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Strikes that sentence, and otherwise, the staff recommendation is to approve the revised housing element.
So just to review for those of you that don't have this in front of you, the last one is, he's proposing eliminating the sentence that says, however, there is controversy surrounding the water allocation and the impacts of pumping at this location on the groundwater basin. As a result, any development would require environmental review. That is being struck.
Both sentences or just the first?
He said, there is the first. All of what the mayor just read is struck. And that's based on discussions with Marina Coast Water District. And so staff's recommendation then is with those two edits, that council consider approving the revised version, which removes the requirement for rezoning? And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Most of these revisions were in response to comment letters that we got?
Yes.
Any specific comment letter?
The preponderance of our time was spent on the comment letter from Land Watch, and we were in dialogue with both Land Watch and HCD in Sacramento.
Okay. So there's been, there's been an attempt to...
Oh, I would, as I think Alex described it on the phone with John the other day, there's been more than a good faith attempt, there has been a significant effort of the city to hear Land Watch, and short of letting them write our land use document, to try to hear what they're saying, and where we can, where we believe it is in the best interest of the city, to take those considerations into account.
Any other comments?
Just a general comment is, after 34 years of government service in the Army, I have learned that plans, policies, or whatever you want to call them, projects are, be happy when you get to about 75%. You will always, as somebody told me the other day, your plan is only as good as your first engagement with the enemy, and then your plan is going to change. Our enemy is lack of water, the environment, nature, and conflicting desires within the community, as well as the needs of the community changing. And one thing I also learned in the military is to beware of paralysis by analysis, spending so much time that nothing ever gets done. We need to go forward.
Thanks.
Well said. Very well said, and I agree. And Denise Duffy, it was a great presentation, really appreciate it. I feel very clear about this, and I think we should move on.
Ms. Cento?
Also Denise, I appreciate your response to the questions that were raised during the comment period, and outstanding presentation, clarified many things for me also. Thank you. Oh, and I am in agreement with Louise, I think we need to move forward on this.
So I have a couple of comments. I spent a lot of time looking at all the documents and reviewing, the planning commission meeting was very helpful, lots of really good questions. I received a letter in February asking about our housing element, and ever since then, Denise and Ashley and Alex and Dino have been working very hard on this. So that said, what came to me as a solution, we have to remember that we have to do a second version, and we can begin that as quickly as January to be fully compliant for our eight-year timeframe. So what came to me is, there are a lot of upcoming items that are relevant to this, such as there's new housing regulations that will go, that will kick in January 1st. Senate Bill 35 will streamline the SEQA approval process for particular affordable projects. I don't know how this fits or how it doesn't, but I don't think anyone does. Assembly Bill 881 encourages ADUs by eliminating the minimum lot size requirements. Ours is currently 8,000 square feet to have an ADU, and this will eliminate all of that. By June 30th, we should have a Marina Coast Water District water agreement for that, and we'll have a Better Idea of Life post-FORA. And December 31st, like we've all talked about, there will be the water CDO lifted, so we should have water for in-city use, and hopefully by then, so we'll have water in-city and then water at the Fort Ord parcels. My suggestion would be to take 1 and 1A out of contention due to the site constraints that we've been talking about. We eliminate the first round of litigation, there will be more as we proceed. I agree with Planning Commissioner Donaldson's recommendation to rezone the 17 acre to open space in perpetuity. Tied to that, I would like to take the opportunity to ensure the Work Memorial Park space that was donated to us by the family, I want to make sure that those intentions are honored. So if we were, so then we take out items 1, 1A, 2, and 3, so that leaves us with 4. That is the residential zone throughout the city. There's no rezoning needed, there's no water constraints because of the CDO lift, we align with new ADU legislation requirements, with a new updated ADU ordinance, we are compliant with specificity. We qualify for the SB2 funding, there is no litigation, again, at this point, and we get over the first finish line, while next year we can focus on the agreements that go into place, and we can move forward at that point. So those are my ideas after, oh, one other thing is there is increasing litigation about these types of instances, one of which just happened in September. So as we've been, you know, moving forward, there are other things that are going on as well in this, what appears to be a rush for affordable housing and to address that need. So those give me great pause as far as our risk management. So those are my thoughts on this, it's been a long process. I agree we need to move forward, but I want to move forward cautiously, so thank you.
I have some final comments. I am driven to solving our region's housing affordability crisis. I have a very personal reason to make it affordable for Monterey Peninsula Unified School District to recruit and retain high-quality teachers to this area. PK Diffendock is a very good friend of mine, Wanny Rudaskewd is a friend of mine, I've discussed ad nauseam about this issue. DRO has uniquely afforded the opportunity to make a significant contribution to addressing the region's housing crisis, and that's because we have land and water. This housing element is a commitment. It's bold, and the times require that the electeds be bold. It's tough, it takes courage. Land Watch is a bully. This is, you know, that we revised our housing element from the planning commissions in response to Land Watch, Land Watch's direct threat to litigate, and Mr. Farrell still stood before me and wagged his finger to tell me what I can't do in my city. The city that I grew up in is shameful. I think that making tough decisions in the face of opposition is what we are elected to do. It's time, we have to do this. I move that we accept the staff recommendations with the end... I move that we accept the staff recommendations with the, with the edits, two, three, with Marina Coasts and the regard, with regard to water, and accept this housing element.
I second.
I second.
All right, any further comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. All right. On that note, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming out, and happy holidays.